Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the second work session for the budget of the Salisbury City Council for 2021. First up on the agenda today is we're finishing up on the Personnel Committee presentations, and the first one up is the Government Office Building. And Becca, are you with us?
I'm here.
All right, Becca, you have the floor.
Hi, guys. So we just wanted to share some things. No one really had any crazy, you know, suggested changes or anything, but we wanted to come in and kind of share what we were thankful for with you guys. So everyone was thankful that we kept our, or that we had a step increase. And they were thankful for our half day off for Christmas Eve and having a day off after Christmas. And that is it.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic, Becca.
It's an easy group.
Yeah, we were easy.
That's pretty good. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No, thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
Thanks, guys.
April, are you on yet? All right, we'll go to Angela.
No questions.
Thank you. Michelle?
No questions. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
No question.
Becca, thank you for, oh, April's there. I heard her. Okay, Becca, thanks very much for all you guys doing the Government Office Building. You guys are on top of everything, especially the Christmas song list that we, we put together.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys DJing.
Yeah, thanks very much, Becca. Have a great day.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
That was a really tough choice to make, too.
Yeah, yeah, it was. Okay, now we'll start on the rest of the departmentals. We start off with Infrastructure and Development. And Mrs. Pollak, Amanda, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay, if you would, please talk about your critical items, and then we'll get into the questions regarding the departmentals. And if you have any particular things in the departmentals you want to highlight, please do that as you go.
Okay, great, thank you. So I have six orgs in Infrastructure and Development, so we'll run through them very quickly. We did strive to maintain level operating in all the operating accounts. So the first org that you have in front of you is 19000, and this is our planning account. And the most notable item here is that we are funding the next two phases of our zoning rewrite project. So this year in FY20, we had funded the first phase. We had shown it as phases two and three to be in FY21 and 22, but we are able to hopefully accelerate that and fund phases two and three in FY21. So that's, that's great news. Keith highlighted it there on the screen. That's really the, the big change in that org. Okay, so the next.
Wait, let's, let's do, see if anybody has any questions on that one. Mr. Boda?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Ms. Blake?
No questions.
April?
No questions.
Michelle?
No questions.
The, and the only question I had you answered, so we're good to go. What's next?
The next org is 25100, which is building permits and inspections. Again, this, this operating account is relatively straightforward. It includes four staff members in this org and their associated operating expenses. There are not any significant changes here this year. We had two very small essential items to add in safety shoes and uniforms, and I was able to cover that within the level operating budget. So fortunately, this, this org is very straightforward.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Boda?
Nope.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
No.
And I have none either. Nice job. Let's go to the next one.
This next org is 31,000. It's one of three engineering orgs. This is the general fund one. Later on, we'll get to the water engineering and sewer engineering. All the DID staff is split between these three orgs. There are a couple notable changes in 31,000 I wanted to point out. First of all, we addressed a request from the Creek Watchers Group and Wycomico Environmental Trust to increase their, our contribution to, to wet from $7,500 to $10,000 this year. Let's see, Keith, right there, yes, skill services. We were again able to do this within level operating, so we adjusted other accounts in this org accordingly. Also, a new item, if you can keep scrolling down just a little bit, Keith, is we included the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee so that they can have some funding for event supplies. Oops, I think we missed it. I'm sorry. Okay, right there, stop. BPAC supplies, so event supplies, as well as they would like to create a better bike valet system so that during events like Third Friday and Folk Festival, they've had bike valley in the past. Now they can have some barriers and signs. So we had previously funded the green team in the past. We reduced that funding by $540. We are providing a similar level of funding, $2,000 to BPAC as green team. And again, we were able to adjust other accounts to handle this in level operating. And then the final item I wanted to note is, is up at the top of your screen right now, the street maintenance program and also the curb gutter and sidewalk program, which is at the very top. Both of those got reduced this year accordingly based on the, the funding available. So we will adjust our street paving schedule to, to fit the budget.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Boda?
So on the proposed highway user revenue is, so is not all of that money is not going into the street maintenance program?
Keith Cordrey or Julia, is that a, a question you could field?
Yeah, is the, the street contributions don't exclusively target paving. They're, the, the whole department consumes the amount that is provided by HR funds and more. So it doesn't have to go specifically into this line.
Okay, thank you.
So just to answer the question even more specifically, we never extend in this line the equivalent amount of what we receive in HR funds. It's always, it's always less.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, where does the bulk of the HRs go?
Well, it, it goes to the general fund, the entire amount. And for streets, though, there are other expenses other than just paving that we, we incur. So there are various costs related to street maintenance and streets that, that represent the total cost the city realizes to maintain the streets.
Okay. Ms. Blake, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to ask Amanda, are you feeling confident with the budget that you'll be able to do like the projects with street maintenance with this, with this amount?
Yes, we just, we'll adjust our list accordingly. So when we put forth our list every year, we rank the streets by their condition, and then we have an estimate for how much each street will cost. And some cost more because there's possibly more sidewalk works that has to get done in association. So, um, so we, we just have to look at the list as a whole and decide how we're going to adjust it based on this amount. So, you know, it's, street maintenance is ongoing. We're, it's, it's never going to be done. We do have some of the new tools like the, the slurry and some of the other micro-surfacing options that we could do that are less expensive, but would be done on a street that's not in as bad condition. So maybe we would tackle some more minor streets instead of major, major repaving. So we'll, we'll take a look now and, and get really specific on what streets we'll be able to do.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, every question's been answered for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions. They've already covered it.
Thank you. Amanda, a couple of, just a couple of questions relative to the sidewalks and streets and gutters. Relative to the ADA requirements, how are we doing? Where are we in percentage? Can you, do you know?
Um, I don't know a percentage off the top of my head. So obviously, every time we pave a street, we bring the, the sidewalks and the ramps up to ADA compliance. So we do have a sidewalk viewer that shows us how many ADA ramps we have. So I'll take a look at that and see if I can come up with a, a percentage of, of compliance or what we have left to do. But that does factor into where we target doing street maintenance, for sure.
Yeah, good. I was, I was saying that's, if there's going to be a priority list, that should be part of it, obviously. That would be great. Don't spend a ton of time on it. Just give me a rough percentage. I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, all right. That's fine with that. Can we go to the next?
Okay, the next org is 60850. And this is our stormwater utility. This is the, the stormwater portion of it. Okay, there we go. And, and again, this is a relatively small org. There's no personnel in this org. Couple of notable things is we have increased the consulting fees line is our Chesapeake Bay Trust grant contribution. So we increased that this year to $75,000, or we're proposing to. This year, we had provided $50,000, and we had great support and a lot of interest in that grant program. So we're looking to increase that next year and hopefully get more restoration projects in addition to outreach. The other notable item, so I, I reduced the storm drain number just based on how we've been tracking so far with utilizing that, that money. But part of what we're also going to use that for this year is a maintenance contract for all the new best management practices, like the buyer retention areas on Main Street. It's, it's placing a significant burden on field ops when we keep putting in all these nice, small stormwater practices. That's a lot to maintain. So we're working on writing an RFP for a maintenance contract for those types of items. So that's included in the storm drain line. And the engineering support for this is where we utilize our stormwater support contract to hire consultants to help us with our MS4 programming and those types of projects so that we kept the same this year.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
No, no questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions either, so that's fine.
Okay, the last two orgs, there's 81080. And this is the, the, the water portion of engineering. See, I'll, I'll let Keith get there. So the last two orgs are 81080 and 84080, and it's the water and the sewer portions of engineering. Again, this is, each account has about a third of the staff salary and about a third of other things like cell phones and office supplies and, and that type of thing. So this was pretty straightforward this year. Actually, in both of these orgs, I did not have any significant or critical changes. They stayed very, very similar to the last year. We just adjusted some of the accounts accordingly.
Okay. Mr. Boda?
Everything looks good in here. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions at all.
Ms. Blake?
No questions. I, I really think it's great, Amanda, that the things that you've added in a lot of areas that you were able to go back to, to the kind of level of the funding to, you know, and I appreciate you looking at other accounts to see where you can get your new requests met as much as you could. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Looks good. Next.
Okay, so next, I, I wanted to hit on a couple of things that were outside of these orgs. For an essential item, we've, we've proposed a planning career ladder this year, and this is for the planning department, which, as you know, just came into existence in July of 2017. So it's taken us a few years of having this department under our belts to be able to create the career ladder. So there is positions for planning technician, a planner one, two, and three, and it has different milestones on how you would get that increase. The transportation project specialist, and then the city planner. So we have existing people in these positions, so this year they'll be retitled, such as the planner threes that we have, we're currently called project managers. So no one this year is changing grade or step. Everyone's in the right place, but now we have outlined what it, what it would take to be able to change on the career ladder. So these position titles are in the approved position summary. Again, there's no funding request for it this year. We just are looking to adopt the career ladder as part of this year's budget. So that was one. The next two things real quick, as you know, Keith shows all the grants that are coming in on Schedule C. And we were very fortunate to get an announcement last week that we were awarded $50,000 from the Maryland Energy Administration to continue our LED streetlight replacements. So we're very excited about that. It came in just in the nick of time so we could get it on Schedule C, so we were able to add that this year. This is the highest award that we've had through MEA, and this will convert 130 streetlights, and they're throughout town. I, I have the list, but they're, they're all over the place. So it's a great, great program. We're happy to have gotten that funding, and you'll see that on Schedule C.
Amanda, can I interrupt just for a second?
Please.
What was the, what was the match for that?
The match?
Yeah, the additional.
So we just have to match $10,000, and we can use in-kind labor, and that's what we have used in the past. So our, the, the Field Operations Traffic Division has done a lot of the installation work, and we've been able to capture their time and show that as the match. So that's what we plan to do again this year. So it's not a cash match. It's, it's labor.
That's my favorite kind.
Mine, too.
There's no, no impact to the budget. We don't have to adjust the, the match account because you have it already built into your budget.
Yep.
That's good. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. And the very last budget item I wanted to note is this year I had my first tuition request from a DID staff person. I'm thrilled to support that. I know it's not in my budget. It's in HR's, but I just wanted to extend an appreciation that we have this tuition reimbursement program. I know it means a lot to this particular staff person.
Fantastic. All right, final comments. Mr. Boda?
Uh, great to hear about that grant for the LED lights. That's, that is going to save, every time we replace those, it saves a lot on electricity because our, our lights are a significant portion of our electricity. But thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, I have no questions. I can say that Amanda's done a great job on the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Jack. Ms. Blake?
No questions. And Amanda, everything you do is just impeccable. Thank you for any, it really is. Thank you.
Next is Mrs. Gregory.
No questions. Just want to reiterate what everybody else is saying. You're doing great.
And I have just a couple of comments. Amanda, since you've taken over the, the department and we've had the reorganization, which I, when, when that happened, it was kind of shocking, and, and I, my question was, can she handle the whole thing? Well, I think you've proven that you can handle the whole thing a little bit more. So thank you for what you and your department does. Please make sure that you tell everyone how appreciative we are, and especially during this time, keeping the budgets pretty flat. The highest thing, just so you know, is the healthcare costs, and you couldn't do anything about that anyway. So we appreciate it very much, and thank you for the work you do.
Great. Thank you all, and Happy Earth Day. Make sure you check out our virtual Earth Day today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, next up, what do we have next? Water and sewer?
Yes, Cory is on.
Cory's on? Good. Hi, Cory.
Good morning. How are you?
We're doing fine so far.
Okay.
So if you start, if you could start off with your critical items, if you have any, and then we'll go to the departmentals.
Okay, um, we really don't have any critical items because we were able to fund most of those right this year. We had a couple of things where we have the Apprenticeship Maryland Program that's going on, that we're partnering with Wycomico County. We're hoping that's still going to go. We're looking, it was supposed to start this summer. We're looking for it to start in the fall. And that's a program where we're going to work with the school, and a school student's going to come into one in the water plant, one in the wastewater plant, and train for the next two years of their high school, and then hopefully they can work right into a position. So that is in the budget. I think there's 4,560 in each department for that, for the salary for the kids.
Okay. So let's go right to the, the departmentals. Keith, 81080?
It should be on the screen.
Got you. 81080. All right, Cory, if you want to give us some highlights, or if there are none, that's fine.
Okay, that's.
81080 is water engineering. That was Amanda's.
Yeah, that's Amanda. Mine starts with 82075, right there.
Give me a second to get there. I got it.
Okay, 82075 is the water treatment plant, and we really, we didn't have any increases here. We've just, you know, moved some of the money around. So there's, I don't know why I'm making all these noises. But I don't. We didn't change anything other than, I guess we'll get into that later. We have a few reclassifications and some market rate adjustments, but other than that, the basic budget didn't change. We've decreased the electricity a little bit.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
This is Gregory.
No questions.
I've got just two, a minor one. Did we, anybody in clerical?
Yes, we just hired someone there. She started about two months ago, so.
Okay. And the other question I had was, we've, we've got the, we've got a lot of experience now, at least a year under our belt of the, the new plant.
This is the water.
The water plant.
Yeah.
There's, there's a, an increase of 20 grand. Is that, do you think now we have a good handle on what the total cost of the chemical is, are on a, on an annual basis?
No. I think you're asking me about the wastewater plant, but this is the water plant, but we still don't have a good grip on the chemicals at the wastewater plant yet. We are still trying things and experimenting with things and trying to get things up to where they're supposed to be. In addition to that, chemicals will go out for bid later on this year. I think about November. Our three-year contract's up, so we will go out for bid. We're not sure where the chemical costs are going to come in this year. Last year at this time, they were predicting they would be higher, but now due to the economy and everything else, we're hoping maybe they'll go a little lower. We're really, that's a real uncertainty right there. We're hoping that it's going to stay right where it is.
Got you, because I noticed even on the, the water one, we're up 20 grand in the water. That's, that's only 4%, so it's not a big deal, but it's still an increase.
Yeah, we put that in based on some numbers we got back in the beginning in December from some of our vendors. They were predicting increases at that time because we were asking what they were thinking, and they were predicting increases for next year when we go out for bid again. But like I said, before the economy fell and everything else, so we're really not sure what we're going to be looking at next year.
Right. That's smart to put it in. It's smart to put it in if they gave you a heads up. And the last question, the last question I have is, under vehicles, it's $50,000 reduction. What was that?
Right. We put in for a new truck at the water plant. We feel like we can fund that right now out of money we have left in FY20. So we pulled it back out, and we're going to go ahead and purchase the vehicle now.
Got you. Okay, fair enough. Uh, okay, we've got all the questions there. What's the next, next item? Next list.
Next one should be 8300, Water Administration.
Yep, got it.
Yeah, that's, that's just my department. That's Laura and myself. Nothing changed at all here. We kept that exactly as it was last year.
Yep, I see that. Mr. Boda, questions?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
No questions. Great preparation. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And I have none either. Good job on that. Cory, next?
Okay, the next one should be 86083, which is the wastewater treatment plant. That's the new plant. We actually, the electricity, we actually took it down $100,000 this year. Last year, we asked for 950, so we took it back to 850. And that was based on our energy consultant's calculation, and I had also came out with the same calculation when I was figuring it because I went through monthly what we've been spending and what we're predicting. And we're even lower than that the current year, but the winter has been mild and, you know, just circumstances where he's predicting a really hot summer and a lot of electricity over the summer. So that was the number that he predicted, and so we're actually saving $100,000 there. And I believe the mayor even took it back another $20,000. And right now, I think that we could probably get away with that. It looks like a safe bet.
Okay, Mr. Boda?
Hey, this was always one of the big unknowns with the wastewater treatment plant was the electric costs, and, and I know the, you know, the other is, is the chemicals because it's, it's still trying, like you said, trying to figure things out. We, we appreciate your work and everything that you do, so thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, great savings so far, as I see with the electricity. Cory, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
No questions. Very well, a great presentation. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
No questions.
Um, you answered my question with the electric. That's, that is excellent news. That, uh, that's fantastic. Cuz I remember the, I remember the meetings when we talked about, uh, when the, um, we talked about what the big expenses were gonna be. Electricity was number one and chemicals was number two. So, uh, that's good news, uh, great job. Fantastic.
Yeah, we're so far tuning it, but I think we're, we're moving downward, so that's, that's good. We shot high and it's coming down. So hopefully it'll continue to trend that way.
And the, and the outfalls are getting better, so that's, that's, that's the best news.
Right.
The river will be healthier.
Everything looks good. Everything's going well, you know. It, it's a lot of work for the staff there now, the, you know, all the construction's gone, the engineering's gone. We're fine tuning the plant. There's a lot of work, but, um, everything's looking great.
Well.
And I credit the staff for that. They're really trying real hard.
Fantastic.
Corey, Corey, speaking of staff, can you talk about what we're doing for them this year?
With merit increases?
Yeah, oh, merit, market rate adjustments to the comp, compensation study you guys did.
Right, yeah, um, happen to have that right here. We, uh, Laura and I did a compensation review this year, um, because we're having a hard time hiring staff at the plants and retaining staff and, um, you know, I, I've been in this business for a long time and never in my career have I seen it like this where you, I've seen before when we advertised for positions, we had stacks of applications and now we can't get people to even apply for the position. And then when we get people in and we get them trained, takes three years to train an operator. And when we get them trained and they get their certification and we spend all this money on training them, then they end up get, you know, they're, they're stolen from us by other utilities. Uh, locally, it's like the Tidewater, the large utilities around here that pay a lot more money. They're pulling them out and they're taking our operators and, um, or the operators don't wanna come to us because they're making more money elsewhere. And so I took a fine look at this because people are retiring from our industry at an enormous rate. They're calling it the silver tsunami. And so we identified our shortages, the amount of people, staff that we have retiring soon. And we looked at, we did a study of other utilities in the area and what they're making. So we did, um, we made up this report. If you'd like a copy of it, I believe it's in Asana, but we could also get you a copy. But, um, we put a market rate adjustment in for all of the employees in Water Works, because not just the operator, our lab is severely underpaid. Um, you know, it's across the board and we're having a really hard time. I've never seen it like this before, you know, to have, retain people in this industry. So, um, there's a market rate adjustment in there. It's less than what I asked for, but I went, I asked big and so I'm still happy because anything is a win for my employees, I feel like. Um, so I don't know, do you want me to go through how it's working or?
I don't need to go into detail. Um, we, we were able to do a couple tiers, um, council, with, uh, the lower end of the tier, your entry level positions at a, um, they got a, uh, four-step increase plus the two-step proposed increase that everyone got. So ten percent, um, and then some people on the upper end got four percent. So similar to our field operations where we did a market rate adjustment, we wanted to take care of, uh, this department. And we were able to make the numbers work, um, sharpen our pencils and still not have to do a rate increase this year, which was great.
I, I do have a question. So how much do you think it costs when you hire someone to, to train them per employee?
We actually worked that out here in our report and it, over a three-year period, it's coming in, I think it was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So my question is, because that costs more, that's, that cost is more than when we hire a police officer and put them through the academy. Um, are we doing contracts? That's a significant amount of money for training. Um, I, I mean, have we considered, you know, doing five-year contracts?
Well, the problem is right now, we're not even getting people to apply for the positions. So it, it's hard enough to bring someone in and get them to work these shift works and with all these dangerous chemicals and these kind of things, um, you know, and then ask them to sign a contract right now with, I don't know if they would go for that or not. But we were pointing that out in the salary though, that, yeah, we're, we're investing a lot in you just with the, we do on-the-job training, you know, once we hire someone, they still aren't working on their own. They're working with someone else for a long period of time and they've got, you know, schooling and classes. And it takes three years before they actually can even sit for the certification exam and pass the certifications they need to run these plants. So, um, there is a lot invested in training and it, it's kinda like the same problem the police department's had in the past, where you get them in, you get them trained, you get them certified, then other utilities are stealing them, they're gonna pay more money and take them. Uh, you know, I lost a really good operator last year. I'd had for three years at the water plant. He got his certification. He was a great operator. He was starting to train other operators. And Tidewater came in and stole him, gave him a take-home vehicle and a much larger salary than we were paying. And even when he left, you know, he said, what could we, you know, what can we do to convince you to stay? And he's like, you couldn't touch it. So, you know, and I still see the guy, we see him around, but, you know, that's a problem we're having right now.
How much more, how much more do they pay him? How much more do they pay?
He didn't say, and Tidewater Utilities did not participate in our, um, survey. We, we asked him, they didn't. I know someone who works there and, um, he told me basically they pay their operators from twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour, which is a lot more than we pay. So, but they're, you know.
It's can't touch private.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are doing. Yeah, Corey, why don't you remind them of the homegrown initiative we're doing, um, with the part-time stuff? With the apprenticeship program.
Apprenticeship program, right. So we've partnership, we, we started a partnership with Wycomico County, um, schools. And we're doing this apprenticeship Maryland program where they're gonna start training the kids. It's gonna be like a vocational, you know, pathway in school. They're gonna take classes that are related to this. They're gonna do some mechanical classes, some math. And, you know, I've worked with the school. We picked out some classes they could take at school. And then part of their day, you know, when they get out of school in the afternoon, they'll come and work at either the water plant or the wastewater plant and train for the next couple of years. And the idea is when they get out of high school, hopefully they've got this career path they can go into and hopefully they come work for it. You know, we've got them trained and we're ready for them. So, uh, that's a real positive thing. That's, they've already got something like this going on out in Western Maryland, out around Cecil County, I believe. And, um, so actually we were hoping it was gonna start this summer and the students would work over the summer, but with what's currently going on, I don't think it'll start before September and I'm hoping it can start in September. But we've been working for probably the last six months with the, uh, school system to get this set up.
Sounds like a great program, Corey. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Boda?
No, I, I think, uh, on some of these positions, uh, that when we spend that much money on training, um, we, we've got a, we've, we've gotta look at some things and, and maybe across the board, uh, cuz that's a significant amount of money to invest in somebody and lose them. So I, I think, you know, and I'm not saying today, but I think maybe we need to take a look at, uh, when we have positions that, that we're providing the training for and we're investing a significant amount of money. Um, we, we've gotta look at, uh, probably a combination of things. But, uh, you know, if a police officer leaves before their contract is up, their training expenses are prorated that they have to pay back to the city. Um, and I think that, uh, that's something, uh, we have other positions, not just the police department now. I would say other, across the board, if we have positions that we're investing a significant amount of money in training, uh, that, uh, we, we, we look at, at something like that, uh, for the rest of them because, uh, it's not fair to the taxpayers of, of this city that we invested that amount of money and then he's gone. And then we don't get any recompensation for that training. So I, I think, I think it's really, it's, it's really something we need to discuss. Thank you.
We'll look into it, Mira, and have a, have a conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a point well taken and we do do it with the police department, so. Um, all right, anything else, Corey?
Um, for wastewater, no, I think that's it.
Okay, where we go now?
Uh, eight six oh eight six is, uh, pre-treatment.
Okay, got it.
Okay, and so nothing changed in this budget, um, other than the market rate adjustments. And then we have eighty-seven hundred, which is the, uh, the other water admin. That's my sewer water admin and that is exactly the same as that was last year.
Except for the market adjustment.
Right.
Right. Okay, any questions on, uh, those two lists? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Excuse me. Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
Questions, but I do think it's very creative to, um, partner with the Wycomico County Board of Ed for internship program. That's very creative and I think that'll be a very good recruiting spot.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. I, I hope we can get it going, you know, soon.
Mrs. Gregory?
Uh, no questions. I do wanna reiterate what Angela said. I, I really like the idea of, of voting vocational and, and trade jobs at, at the high school level.
Thank you. Uh, I have no, no comments and echo with you fellow councilmen's, uh, points. All right, Corey, we have any more? Think that's.
No, that's it.
It should be it. Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, final remarks, Mr. Boda?
Um, no, I, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I do agree with Mira in reference to the training and the calls and how we should, um, present that in the future. Um, coinciding with the police department and their training. Um, but everything else I think is very, um, she did a very good job in presenting it and I appreciate your work, Corey.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Blake?
Uh, no comment.
Mrs. Gregory?
No comments.
Thank you. Uh, Corey, thank you and your, and your staff for a tremendous job. Um, you know, putting on a, getting involved and converting a plant and seeing the results in the shortest period of time that I can imagine from an engineering point of view. You guys should be commended. Uh, you did a great job with the budget and we thank you very much. Please extend our best wishes to, uh, your entire staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, uh, next on the list is Field Ops.
Good mor, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Morning, Tom. How are you?
I'm, I'm well, and yourself?
I'm doing okay.
Good. Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go without video again. I had to loan my Surface Pro to a, um, a fellow member of Field Operations, so I'm having to try to do the screen, uh, from my phone, so we'll, we'll get through it. Um, good morning, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. Uh, I appreciate the, the hard work that was put into, uh, preparing the budget, uh, by the Field Operations staff, um, the work that went into it from the finance, Keith and, and his folks in the Finance Department, and then the tremendous effort that, that the mayor and, and the rest of the executive team have put into, uh, preparing this budget for you. Had, having, uh, served previously as city administrator, I understand how difficult it is to try to pull together a, a budget this large, especially with, uh, numerous needs across all departments. So it is a, uh, it is a bit of a juggling act. Um, considering the Department of Field Operations represents fourteen orgs, uh, if it's okay with, uh, the council, I'd like to just make a, a few remarks and then we can either go through each org or, uh, I can field questions, um, a, as are necessary. But, um, I'll, I'll start out by saying that I, I can't stress, uh, I will say that thankfully we're not facing a, uh, I was just listening to, to Corey, we're not facing a silver tsunami, I believe she called it. Um, but we do struggle with the same, uh, recruitment and retention issues that the, um, Water Works Department does. Uh, in the past, I've had as many as a hundred and fourteen applications. And today, uh, in this particular market, not currently necessarily, but, uh, we're lucky if we get a half a dozen applications for, uh, for example, for a motor equipment operator. So, um, having, uh, presented at the recommendation, requested the mayor's office and with support from uh, the Human Resources Department, uh, we proffered a, a, a market adjustment proposal that included, uh, possibility of a two, four, six, or eight percent market adjustment for all Department of Field Operations staff that are grade five or below. These are entry-level positions, for example, motor equipment operator one, two, and three, park maintenance worker, mechanic, so on. These are the folks that, uh, find themselves on the lower end of the compensation scale. Uh, typically when you get further into the, higher up into the chain of command, those folks tend to stay on, but we face those same problems with, uh, recruitment and retention and we make a significant investment in those folks as well. So, um, if, if the council sees fit to leave this, uh, six percent market adjustment in, again, for all folks, grade five and below, I think that'll go a long way with helping with morale. Uh, so, so we appreciate that and we hope you can support it. Um, regarding project and request that were funded, we're absolutely thrilled to see that the mayor's office was able to include the two million dollars for the new administrative building. Uh, we've got some conceptual plans. I think it's a, it's a gorgeous structure. It'll represent, uh, not only the Department of Field Operations, but the city of Salisbury and it shows a strong investment in the neighborhood. You'll have, uh, the Fire Department headquarters right down the street. As you come up the top of, uh, Cypress Street where it intersects Isabella, uh, we'll sit if we're able to get there, the, the new Department of Field Operations Administrative Building. It'll have a very large conference space in it that can be used for not only purposes for field operations, but the community as well. We anticipate being able to hold community meetings and that sort of thing there. Uh, it's, it's really a very nice-looking structure. Uh, while we're not able to get the rear-load trash truck that we requested, uh, the mayor's office was able to include two one-ton, one-ton dump trucks. They'll be used in the sanitation department to help with our, um, ongoing recycling program. Of course, the zoo pavilion was included as well. Uh, the ADA ramp and bathrooms for Poplar Hill Mansion, which absolutely had to be done. We needed to, uh, meet MHT requirements. And then the hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Church Street stormwater pipe rehab. That's really more a did project, but it lands in the Field Ops budget. So, um, we're, we're thrilled that we were able to get the, uh, some of the things that we asked for. Uh, over time, we are going to need more things when we present our essential items that they are not a Christmas wish list. They are an absolute, uh, needs request. Uh, for example, I, I think, um, Employee Affairs Committee was gonna mention the fact that we're still using a, a chipper for all of the trimming and cutting that we do. That's, you know, from the nineties. It went down, I think, last week again. So at some point, um, we're gonna have to look at replacing some of those items, but we understand the constraints of the budget and, and we're, we're just absolutely thrilled that we were able to, uh, the mayor's office was able to provide us with what they did so far this year. So, um, the, the budget is what it is. We're comfortable with it. Um, I appreciate your effort. Hope you see fit to leave those, um, items in the budget and I'll, I'll stop rambling and, and take questions if anybody has any. Again, we're, we represent fourteen orgs, so I'll start anywhere you like.
Uh, what I'd like to do, Tom, is what we've done with the other departments, if we just start and go down the list, uh, we should have all done, and we have so far done, all of us have done our homework. So we don't go line by line, but we, we may have some questions. So we don't go line by line, but we, we may have some questions. So if we could start with the first one, uh, and then, uh, if you have anything to comment about that particular, uh, item, go ahead and, uh, tell it now, and then if not, then we'll go, uh, councilperson by councilperson and ask any questions that we have.
So I see Keith has, uh, twenty-two thousand, or the Traffic Department, uh, and Highway Lighting up on the screen. Uh, nothing significant there. Um, we did ask for a couple of electricians, um, but, uh, they just, we're not able to be funded, so we're comfortable with that.
All right, let me get to, okay. Mr. Boda, any questions?
Um, yes, we were, uh, when we were talking to the Personnel Committee, one of the concerns, they did bring up the electricians. Um, one of the other concerns was striping, uh, that we're having trouble getting on the schedule either with the state or, uh, getting some of the other, other companies', uh, availability on, on our striping. So, and, and they had recommended, uh, the city doing its own striping. Uh, any thoughts on that? Any, any ideas on how much that would cost? Um, and so I'll just let you answer that.
Well, I have to get back into my list of essential items to tell you exactly what the price tag was on that lane striper. It is true that from time to time, we had difficulty, uh, working with, uh, third-party providers. What we've done for the most part in the past is piggybacking State Highway Administration. Um, I think what the Employee Affairs Committee is talking about here most is we make out okay when it comes to, uh, getting striping done for new work, uh, but we don't have the opportunity to go back and, and really re-stripe anything that might would need it. Um, I'll say this about that. It's gonna come down to, uh, if, if we were to purchase the lane striper, then it, we would probably need personnel to be able to spend time to, to get it out and make best use of the investment.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, Tom, I heard you say something about a new building.
Yes, ma'am.
And how much did you say that was, uh, the money, the money that was given to it, towards it?
The price tag is two million dollars. Uh, where we're at currently, uh, at, uh, two hundred dollars per square foot, um, is about one point eight million, and then we would need some additional funding for, uh, furniture fixtures and equipment. As you know, the service center is an aging structure. Our, our newest buildings are from the nineties. Uh, to put it in perspective, when I started with the City of Salisbury in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, they were, everybody was all excited because we were going to, um, build a new garage. Uh, that garage still stands today. It, it is, uh, it is outdated, and we are in the design phase for that project as well. We have a um, a six-phase plan, uh, to completely renovate the service center complex encompassing the entire neighborhood, again, a full, um, rehab of the site as well as an investment in the community. So to answer your question specifically, uh, that price tag is, is two million dollars.
Okay, now let me ask you another question. How far will that go from Mac Avenue?
Uh, the way the, um, Field Operations Master Plan has set up, the administrative building, as I mentioned earlier, and perhaps it is simply, I went through it too quickly, uh, the administrative building is situated closer to Mac Avenue currently. Under the new Field Ops Master Plan, it would be over at the intersection of Cypress and West Isabella. So as you come to the top of Cypress, approaching the intersection of Isabella, you would be facing the new, um, Field Operations, uh, public facility.
Well, I can say this, I, I would appreciate it because it would, that building, as you said, the very front building on the Lake Street side is older than I am. And I would appreciate it because it would be a beautification and an enhancement to, um, District One, um, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I, I, uh, I, I would say to you that, uh, if, if I'm doing a great job, it's because staff is, uh, I, I take, they take, they get all the credit for everything we do.
Well, the, the body is, is as good as the head, so you're the head, so the body follows.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blake?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Yesterday, uh, there was a lot of talk about adding three, uh, two or three additional electricians, um, and I, because they apparently, there's a lot of contractual work out or contract out to cover the amount of electricity work that needs to be done, and I was hoping to get a idea of how much we spend in that contractual work versus how much it would be to add an additional, um, electrician.
I wouldn't be able to draw that comparison for you this morning, but if council will permit it, I'll certainly cir- circle back to you with that information.
Okay, that'll be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Gregory? You're on mute.
Sorry, I, I think you guys have covered it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I have one question, but it's more for Keith, I think. Um, on the lease, the leases, I'm assuming that the new lease payments and the existing lease payments, obviously, there was a change or a transfer there?
Yeah, every year, um, any equipment that is a new outlay for that year, we put the related lease payment in that five, five, eight, six hundred, just to isolate it, so, um, it's easier to follow, and then the following year, it gets, uh, merged into the existing lease payment below it, probably seven hundred.
Gotcha. I, I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure.
Differences probably where it just got trued up, where it, it went from fifteen to fourteen point eight, so there's a small difference here.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. I just want to make sure that was not, um, there wasn't something missed. Um, all right, next, uh, next area we're gonna go through?
Where are you gonna go, Keith? Thirty-one, one fifty Streets?
Uh, yeah, that'll be, well, thirty, was it, uh, thirty thousand?
Resource Management, yes.
Yep, we're there.
Thank you, Keith. So everything's pretty, uh, stayed pretty much the same in Resource Management. Uh, you will see, uh, if you look back at, uh, a couple of previous budgets throughout Field Operations, we have tried to true up the, the actual spending as, uh, as it occurs. In the past, the, the lion's share of the money, for whatever reason, ended up in, uh, thirty-one, one fifty, the Streets Department, and everybody purchased it out of that account. Why it was done that way, I don't know. Uh, maybe for sake of ease, but for example, what we've done is try to create, um, you know, supply lines and that kind of thing just within each org. So those are the basic, basic changes that have occurred throughout.
Great. Um, questions, Mr. Boda?
No, I don't, nothing here. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And I have none either. Let's go to the next one.
Uh, Streets, three, one, one five.
Thirty-one, one fifty Streets. Um, no significant changes here. We do have a number of employees that would be impacted by the six percent market adjustment. Those are your, uh, MEO, um, ones, twos, and threes.
Okay. I'll, I'll jump in and just point out while we have this opportunity that, um, you get, you can see all of these lines also, uh, go into the computation of H U R, uh, expenditures. So you can see there's a, a significant amount in this org that's spent on Streets.
Yep. Um, all right, questions, Mr. Boda?
Uh, no, no questions on this.
Um, Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Mrs. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Uh, I've got one, Tom. Uh, under operating, uh, there was an eighteen thousand dollar reduction, which is like a thirty percent. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think what, uh, if memory serves, what we did there, the money that we use for inmate labor, uh, some, just under seventeen thousand dollars, I think it is, uh, we moved that money to the sanitation department because that labor actually supports the sanitation division. So that's why that change occurred. Keith, am I seeing the right thing? My screen is so small.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, that, that was just trueing up the expenditure.
Fantastic, thank you. That answers my question.
I, I will say, Mr. Heath, if, if you want to add that half million dollars to the, uh, the pothole filling machine that we talked about last year, we'd be happy to take that.
So what's the next, what's the next item? We can talk about that sometime, Tom.
The three, two, oh, six. Yeah, and there's, uh, collections disposals.
So this is our, uh, sanitation department. You, you should see that, uh, those monies, again, for the, um, inmate labor added to this account. And we also have folks here that are impacted by
Okay. Yep. Uh, questions, Mr. Boda?
Not on this, no.
Ms. Jackson?
Not a one.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Uh, just have two, just a quick one. It's not a big item, but I just want to make sure we don't miss anything. Janitorial, did we eliminate the service?
Keith, are you moving through that?
It's, um, five, four, six, oh, oh, two.
That probably got moved over to Resource Management.
Okay.
Because we were paying for those janitorial services in the admin building out of the, um, sanitation account.
Gotcha. I just, I just don't want you to have to operate in a dirty building, so.
Um.
And the other one, I, uh, I'm, I'm making an assumption, which I should never do, but I assume we got rid of a propane tank, uh, high-low, and we turned it over to electric or gasoline?
Yeah, we, we were working on the propane model for a while, but, um, it, it just didn't work out. That was a pilot program that was started several years ago.
Okay. Nope, that answers my questions. Um, next, Keith, where do you want to go?
Three, two, oh, six, two, recycle.
Okay.
So no significant changes here. Uh, this is the area where we had requested a, uh, a rear packer. Um, Ron Ari, who is our sanitation superintendent, was hoping to, uh, get the rear packer so that we could, um, improve our cardboard recycling program. Right now, what we're having to do is actually put those items in the back of a, a pickup with a cap, a cap on it. Um, but supplementing the, the one, one-ton, uh, dump trucks will offset that.
Yeah, that was one of the, uh, the things on the Personnel Committee's, uh, list. Which is good.
The rear packer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
But if the dumps, if the dump truck helps, that's great.
It does, and it also gives us the ability to use them for, uh, other things other than just the, uh, you know, as, as a rear packer, uh, for cardboard. So, uh, there, it gives us a multiple function.
Gotcha. Good. Uh, questions, Mr. Boda?
Yep, thanks for that, Tom.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I have none either, so that's fine. Keith, where do you want to go?
Uh, three, four, oh, six, four, Fleet.
So Fleet Maintenance, no significant changes here. Uh, we, you are, you will see throughout, there's some areas where we tended to true up the budget. Um, you also have folks within this org that are impacted by the market adjustment. Um, we're, we're paying our, um, mechanics somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, between thirty and thirty-five thousand, and if, if they can get the credentialing they need, or they have those credentials, they're working the private sector for, you know, sixty or sixty-five thousand. So we've got a, a young, energetic group that, uh, we'd like to hang on to. So the market adjustment will go a long way with, uh, with helping with that.
Any questions, Mr. Boda?
No, looks good.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And I have none either, so that's fine.
Go lay down, go lay down.
Keith, next?
A thirty-five thousand carpentry.
Gotcha, I'm there.
So no significant, uh, adjustments here. We did have a, a reclassification, which was moving a, um, painter to a carpenter one. That needed to be done. In the past, we had a, a carpenter supervisor, an assistant carpenter, and a painter, so we've just combined, uh, the, the, um, positions together and, and classified it as carpenter one.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Boda?
Not on this one, no.
Uh, Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Uh, I've got one on, uh, health insurance. Is that a calculation error, or if we have the same number of people and everybody else's health insurance went up, why is this one going down?
It's likely the change in coverage. The, um, previous employee had a benefit package that was more expensive than the current employee.
Okay. Answers that question. I just didn't want to, want you to come up short in health insurance.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, Mr. Cordery?
Uh, forty thousand.
Sorry, April, I hear April.
I need to be a student for one minute.
Okay, no problem. Um.
Forty thousand.
Just fourth, that, fourth, forty thousand?
Yeah, zoo.
So now we're into the zoo. Um, we are requesting the addition of a veterinarian. I'm, I'm sure everybody on the, uh, council is aware of situation we find ourselves in at the zoo. Uh, I'm happy to tell you that we're making a lot of progress to get all of that turned around, but one thing that we think we absolutely need is, is a full-time veterinarian. Um, you might would ask, but what would a full-time vet do? Uh, there's an expectation that not, not only would they take care of, uh, the animal healthcare needs, but they can also be a part of the animal enrichment program and perhaps work, um, uh, hand-in-hand with the registrar on, uh, the collection itself. So we're, we're certain we can keep that person busy. Um, contracting this workout, uh, has shown to be difficult. It, it's hard to find somebody that has any, uh, background, uh, with exotic animal care. And, uh, if we can get the right candidate on, onboard, I think it would be a, uh, definitely a plus for the zoo. You've got that phenomenal animal healthcare facility down there and, and, and really not the right expertise in the building.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Boda?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, that we do need a full-time veterinarian there. Um, is that part of the Hold on, did I, hold on, I scooted past something. Is that part of the non-clerical salary increase? And then you're looking at the veterinarian expenses, uh, eighteen thousand, six hundred, which I assume, uh, a veterinarian is gonna make more than that.
Right, those are additional expenses, um, aside from the vet. The, the veterinary, um, care costs for outside contractors have, have risen, um, I think about a hundred percent over the course of the last four or five years. So, um, those are just monies that will need to be spent, um, in addition to bringing the veterinarian onboard for those, uh, those costs for animal care.
Okay, thank you.
Um, well, I don't know, Ms. Jackson, are you back or no? Let's skip to Ms. Blake then, please.
Um, okay, so the vet, so the vet salary is listed under the non-clerical, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. No, that was it. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Uh, no questions. I, I, you know, I agree, we really do need a, a full-time vet.
Um, yes, and I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I sit on the Zoo Commission, and I will tell you that, uh, it is and I will tell you that it is, I've been through the two years of, oh my goodness, what are we going to do? The vets are part-time, and they're not available. So we definitely need a full-time vet. And so I'm glad it's in the budget, and I think it's fine.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Cordery?
Okay, scrolling down to 45,000 Parks.
Okay.
So this is our Parks Department, no substantial changes here. We do have some folks within this org that are impacted by the market adjustment as well.
Questions?
I will, I will say, if I may, between the Street Department and the Parks Department, they are a group of only 18 people, and they are the heart and soul of Field Operations because all of those other groups, you know, the mechanics and traffic specialists and sanitation, you know, we've got a lot of folks, but we've really only got 18 people, that being Streets and Parks, that are really all that's available to us for all of those other things besides Streets and Parks. So they play a very important role. And again, I understand that it could not be funded this year, but at some point, we're going to have to try to consider adding some additional resources there, if at all possible.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Boda?
So Tom, how many parks do we have in the city that they're responsible for?
Well, we list 45 assets, but they're really about 34 parks that they take care of. Now, keep in mind, the City Park is listed as one park, and when you compare that to Robin's Nest Park, it's quite a contrast there, but it's a, it's a lot of acreage. I actually have that written down on the wall at the office, the amount of acreage that we take care of, and I don't know it right off the top of my head. 45 assets, 34 parks.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Have one, Tom, just, is there something that we weren't doing in terms of chemicals, or are the chemical prices just going up?
I think the increase here is where we're adding additional fund for the pond management at Schumacher Pond. We're proposing to partner with Waukesha County to do a, you can only do a third of the pond per year. So we added additional monies within that account to fund our portion of pond maintenance for Schumacher.
Great, thank you. That's the only question I have. Mr. Cordery?
Next is 31154 Parking.
So the Parking Authority, no substantial changes here. We continue to make progress with facility improvements. We're working on the new roof membrane. Did run into a little snag there with some infrastructure concerns, but we'll continue with that project. Have a couple of folks that are impacted by the market adjustment as well. And, you know, by and large, they do a pretty good job. We'd like to look at some programs and incentives by which we could generate a little bit more revenue, but those are still in the discussion phase.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Ms. Gregory?
No questions.
And I have none either, so we're good to go there. Mr. Cordery?
That's it.
Okay. Final comments, Mr. Boda?
Yeah, Tom, I appreciate all the hard work that this crew does. I mean, these are the guys that when something happens, they're called out in the middle of the night or on the weekend. So, you know, we're very appreciative of all the hard work that they do.
I'll make sure to pass it along. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, Tom, as I'm looking at these spreadsheets, you have a lot to contend with. Everything was in order. There weren't a lot of changes. We appreciate your crew, your employees, and want you to continue to do a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Blake?
Um, a question. Yesterday, um, did someone bring up for Field Ops a consideration for on-call money or a stipend? Was that Field Ops or was that another department? I'm looking at my notes, and I think it's, it was Field Ops.
It was Field Ops.
It was Field Ops, okay. Is that anywhere here or a consideration?
It's certainly something that's been talked about over the years. What's been proffered is, at minimum, to provide some level of compensation time for staff that are on-call at any given time. But what that would equate to is some 15 or 1600 hours a year of comp time that we would have to dole out simply for folks to be at the ready. We're not super strict about their reporting requirements. For example, if you're the number-one guy on-call for a specific department, and you're unavailable at time, we just go to the second guy on the list. So we don't make it too terribly rigid. Many, many years ago, you had 30 minutes to respond to the call. If you didn't do that, you could be disciplined. So we've lightened that a little bit. We've got some, I think it's 18 people on-call at any given time, and so that's a lot. The way to overcome this would be to shorten that list, leave that responsibility for notification, notification higher at the top. For example, myself, Mr. Sterling, or Mr. Baker, and then we would dispatch the appropriate personnel from there. It is something that I'm sensitive to. I lived that on-call life for 12 years when I was a supervisor in construction and utilities. It is an inconvenience, but it's often compensated or offset by, you know, if they get a call, for example, they get a call out to turn someone's water off, it's a three-hour minimum. So, you know, you jet out, you turn the water off, you make a recording, and the other two hours and 15 minutes, you get compensated for. So I think there's a little bit of a balance there. But it's something that we've taken a look at, and we'd like to find a compromise. I don't have a good answer for you today because it would be, as I said, a significant investment in time.
Have they ever thought of, or is there a way to use comp time or flex time if you're on-call?
Well, that's what we do.
That's what you do.
We, we offer comp time or overtime, and of course, those folks that are on the lower end of the pay scale often opt for the comp time or for the overtime. So just, you know, a simple call-out could very easily cost us, you know, over $100 to turn somebody's water off. So, you know, the, the yin and yang of it, they pretty much make out. But I do understand. I've been there, and I've done it, and it can be inconvenient.
Okay, that, that, I mean, I'm glad there's a, it does seem like there's a balance to it, and that's, that's even answered my questions, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Mrs. Blake, I mean, Ms. Greg.
Sorry, startled my dog. No questions. I was going to bring up what Angela brought up, but she beat me to it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, relative to the budget, a nice job. And I think that certainly the adjustments to the wages will, should help you a little bit. The one thing that I want to say that has nothing to do with the budget, that I'd like to take a message back to your, to your workers, is that those guys who are out, those 15 guys especially, they're on the front line, and they're heroes as much as our police, our fire, hospital people, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to thank them, and please make sure that they're safe when they're doing their job, anybody else that is dealing with the public. And we appreciate what they do. They are our unsung hero. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. I'll make sure I take it back. They do a phenomenal job, and we are lucky to have them.
Great, thank you.
One question before we leave. I'm guessing that Corey covered 82076 and 86085 Water and Sewer Branch, or is that scheduled for later?
I don't think we did Water and Sewer Branch, do we?
It must be scheduled for a different time then, because we have the Utilities Division, 076 and 86085. No substantial changes there, so.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on those two?
That would be the Utility Water Branch and the Utilities Sewer Branch.
Yep. Mr. Boda, do you have any?
I did not.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
No.
Mrs. Gregory?
No.
Okay, and I did not either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Tom.
All right, have a great day, everyone. Thank you. Good luck with the budget.
Be safe.
Thanks, bye.
All right, I suggest we take a 15-minute break.